PA, meeting set to begin at 7:00 PM. Opening exercise, pledge the flag.
Pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Arbisak, roll call please.
Agher?
Here.
Lysovich?
Here.
Donahue?
Here.
Angler?
Here.
Gaddis?
Here.
Kope?
Here.
Yuwaz?
Here.
DeSento?
Here.
Squires?
Here.
Thank you. Presentations, Dr. Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two presentations this evening. The first one is by the student board representatives. Come up, please. And I'd like to thank them and also Ms. Putko for copying and making sure that everybody has a copy this evening.
Okay. The senior class have just sold out all of our tickets for the upcoming winter dance on Saturday. And we are playing our next event, which is our senior picnic, and has all the senior classes on.
So Student Council has been planning many things. Our most recent thing that we're planning is this rock, paper, scissors competition. We're planning on doing that mid-March. It's a way to get students involved with each other and meeting new people. And then the other big event is our spring one, which is Casanova, and that is tentatively May 2nd. We're still working out some details there, but it's a fun event. You guys should come.
TLC just had their blood drop for the year, and they are planning their next spring event for Easter.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, our second presentation this evening, we're going to have the food services update by Mr. Jason Hill and also Ms. Delaney Caswell. Please come on up.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. We place the presentation we're going to be doing tonight in front of everybody, so you should all have that. To introduce myself again, I'm Delaney Caswell, Regional Manager with the Nutrition Group. And alongside me, we have your Director of Food and Nutrition, Jason Hill. We're very excited to be here tonight to share some of the exciting things that have already happened this school year with you, as well as give you a glimpse at some of the exciting things coming up. Okay.
So, to start, participation this school year has been fantastic. Students are eating, they are enjoying the cafeteria. This is largely in part due to the fact that we made a lot of menu changes this school year, and the students are noticing that. So there's a lot more variety every day that I can choose from, so more variety, largest chance that a student's going to find something, you know, that they enjoy and eat in cafeteria. So larger participation equals more reimbursements and a larger cash intake. So your direct revenue also looks great and is very hopefully above budget, again, due to the amount of students enjoying the cafeteria program this year.
All right, so I just wanted to go over a couple of things we have coming up. Equipment-wise, we're kind of working right now on getting some new pedals for here in the middle school, so that way we can have better equipment for serving the pastas and coconut vegetables as well in it, as well as we're looking to get a new dishwasher over at Homeville, because unfortunately the long we have over there is just continuously not working. And then we're also looking to get some quotes for new serving lines for the high school and the middle school to make it look more modern, offer more grabbing wheel options for the students versus just us serving them, you know, it'll allow them to actually serve themselves as well and grab their own food that they choose to get. And then also looking to get some new school models for a quite large inventory of old age products that just need to be replaced. All right, so just a few of the things that we've done so far this year. We have a, over at Claire Barton, they did a safety week earlier in the year, so we collaborated with the PTA and we did a breakfast with a cop where we offered donuts for the students and for police officers from West Smithland coming in and sitting with, having breakfast with the students, so they got to have donuts, coffee, you know, something we have, and the students also enjoy when we have donuts as well.
And then we had some exciting holiday celebrations. So for Halloween, students enjoyed a spider web waffle for breakfast. This was a waffle covered in powdered sugar with a plastic spider, just to make things a little fun that day. They absolutely loved it. To celebrate Valentine's Day, we just offered all students chocolate and vanilla pudding with a strawberry and some whipped cream. Again, all students really enjoyed that. And then for Thanksgiving and Christmas, we did carving stations at the elementary school. So Jason went around and set up a nice carving station and had a lovely holiday meal for the students.
And then also around Christmas time, this is something that we actually started a little bit last year, it was kind of a spur of the moment thing last year, but this year we had it at all elementary schools, Claire Barton, Homeville, and actually for 4th and 5th grade at the middle school. They had the Grinch come in, so we decided again to do themed donuts in regards to the Grinch. And, you know, the kids really got involved, as you see some kids who got dressed up, you know, the Grinch went around visiting with all the students, and it was just a fun event that they had for the elementary students.
And then a couple months ago, the high school cafeteria staff won Nutrition Group's Moments Matter Award. This is an award that's only given out to three school districts across the whole Nutrition Group every year. Jason nominated the high school staff at West Smithland this year just due to the fantastic job they're doing every day. And this award is all about making every day special for the students, and they absolutely do that here. So we were very proud to give them this award right before Christmas. We had cake, balloons, flowers for them, and then all staff members received $100, so it was a very nice celebration for them, yeah.
All right, then a few more events that we have done. So we had Mully the Cow. This is an event that we do at Elementary H to help promote dairy products for the students. You know, someone comes dressed up as Mully the Cow goes around visiting the students, so we had this at Claire Barton and at Homeville. Then Claire Barton earlier this year, they also did their grant lunch, which was an event where they were able to invite, you know, parents, guardians, grandparents to have lunch with them, so we were able to serve lunch not to students but also to parents as well. And then we also, over at Homeville, we were awarded the grant for the fresh fruit and vegetable this year for Homeville, and one of the requirements for that is we have to have signage in the front lobby indicating that we're doing this. Well, to have fun with it, I decided, and I started it last year and continue it this year, to allow the students to create that sign. So the students were actually able to design a sign with fruits and vegetables on it, and then National School Breakfast, or sorry, National School Lunchroom also happened in October, and it was a pirate theme, so I decided to kind of piggyback off of that and just said, instead of just making a signs that were just fruits and vegetables, let's make it pirate themed as well. So the kids really got creative, and actually that's our winner that's up there that came in first place, and she won a pizza party for her entire lunch.
And then another... Is this still working anymore?
Was it pushed up?
No, it wasn't. Thank you. There we go. This year, another exciting event, Nutrition Group has partnered with the PA Beef Council. So we brought in fresh local beef from Happy Valley Farms out by Penn State, and we made smash burgers for all the students at the high school. This was a really fun day. There were a lot of toppings for the burgers. They got to totally customize. There was bacon, cheese, peppers. They really enjoyed this day, and this is something we will continue to do.
And then we also have, one of the things that I do with students is I meet, try to meet with students in schools throughout the school year, just to go over, you know, ask them some questions, you know, what are things that they like that we're serving in the cafeteria, don't they like, what are things that they would enjoy to have added to the menu? And actually, in this picture, it was the most recent one that I had was with Claire Barton, where they wanted to do an Italian date, so we're going to have a themed Italian date coming in March for the students. Then on Veterans Day, we had a brunch for, here at the middle school, where students were able to bring in veterans to come in with them and have brunch with them. So we were able to create a nice special brunch for them, and then some of the students actually helped us serve this lunch to the students and to their guests. And then also, over the summer, we had a backpack giveaway that they did over at Homeville, and we provided food for anybody that was coming to the backpack giveaway, offering them grilled hot dogs and other various snacks that they would get when they visited.
And then recently, we hosted two stir fry events, one at the high school and one at the middle school. These are really fun. Students really enjoy them. We have a table set up out in the cafeteria of Wox, where they're cooking live action vegetables, so the students can see, smell the food. Basically, when you enter the school, you can smell on stir fry day because it smells so good, and the students really love this day. Lunch is served in a fun container, and they all get a fortune cookie, and we did this at the high school and the middle school.
And lastly, I just wanted to kind of go over what's coming up for the rest of this school year. So coming in March, we actually will be celebrating National School Breakfast Week coming from the first week of March, and it's also going to be Read Across America that they're doing. So we're going to, you know, have for the elementary schools, there's going to be kind of more Dr. Suits themed for them, and we're going to be giving away, you know, students that are going to eat breakfast that day, they'll have an opportunity to win a prize, and the prize for the elementary students is going to actually be a Dr. Suits book. And then for the middle school and high school students that eat breakfast that day, you know, they'll be able to win a gift card. Then for the elementary schools, they do Mario Day on March 10th, so we're going to do, again, a lucky trade for those who won a prize. I got little Mario themed, you know, things for the students to win who get lunch that day. St. Patrick's Day, we're going to celebrate it by just having green fruits, green vegetables, serbs, and kind of green dessert for the students across the entire district. As I mentioned, Italian day over at Claire Barton on the Italian. This was, like I said, something that was suggested by the students that we're going to do. And then to round off the stir fries, we're going to do stir fries for both Homeville and Claire Barton next month as well. And actually, the stir fry was something, I had a meeting with the students over at Homeville back in November. This was something they also suggested, and I told them that we will definitely do it for them, so we're going to be doing it next month for that, as well as for Claire Barton. Then just going into April, you know, other couple of things that I have planned, you know, opening day, you know, for baseball, a theme day for that. And I also want to do carving stations for the secondary schools as well. And then in May, you know, we have a grand lunch over at Claire Barton. We're going to have the grand breakfast at Homeville. There are going to be a 3rd grade field day at the park for the 3rd graders of both Claire Barton and Homeville, and then we're going to be doing cookouts at all the schools, so.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes all the presentations, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Solomon. Item 3, a thème de...
Yes, Mr. President, we have one thème de mythème under District Operations 10, letter F. We need to change the amount for the junior high and 9th grade cheerleading coaches as we move them from club status to athletic status as per this collective bargaining agreement, so they will be changed the amount to 2844 from 1425.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Mr. Lucas, do we need to have any procedural or sense of just amendment?
No, it's, that's a friendly amendment, so you can simply note it in the minutes and approve the item as edited.
Thank you. Item 4, hearing of the citizens. In order to speak at this time, the following must be met. Must be a West Smithland Whittaker or Duquesne resident or a current employee or taxpayer. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels, direct comments to the Board President and/or Superintendent. Remarks are limited to 3 minutes per person. First speaker this evening is Teresa Sekley.
Teresa.
Teresa Sekley, 110 Main Engines Drive. Two questions. The first one is on the, of hiring another security guard. In black and white, it looks like we're hiring another guard, but I have been told that we are down a security guard. So my question is, are we adding another job, or are we just filling the vacancy at this point? And my second question is in regards to these, that was talked about last week at the work session in regards to the vehicles and the plows and the salt spreaders and all that stuff. You know, these vehicles date back to the time where we had six buildings, is where I'm at. Like, we had six buildings at this time, and how many did we have back then versus what we have now? Because obviously, we don't need as many as we did back when we had six separate buildings, and now we only have three separate locations. I mean, I'm just really worried about spending, and if we don't need it, and we still have three other good plows, one for each building, one for each campus, because there isn't much to plow at Homeville, so whoever's plowing at Homeville can come down and piggyback and help the middle school and high school. So I just hope that these decisions about spending this money on these plows and salt spreaders are actually needed because if there's still vehicles we had from, you know, 2006, 18 years ago, we had six separate campuses. So I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're not spending money we don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, John Collins.
Hi, John Collins, Heather Avenue, West Smithland, regarding the Ford Business contract. Ford Business wants $210,000 for another five-year contract, increasing 3% annually. That's $1.1 million for five years. That's a lot of money for incompetence. $70,000 for computer styluses that were left sitting in a box collecting dust for three years. Or maybe it was the hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of iPads that were completely removed by our MDM and then just thrown away. Or maybe it was the iPad, or IP cameras that were bought for K45 for COVID and then less than a year later, thrown away with all the projectors. We had six directors within five years. That's an IT nightmare. Re-teaching employees every year to learn an entire system is asinine. This is how information gets lost. Just like the current director, Mr. Foster, having to reach out to former director, Mr. Greg Roth, who hasn't worked at West Smithland for over six years, literally today. $210,000. That's a lot of money. That's more than any former tech director that has ever worked at West Smithland. The average tech director's salary in Pennsylvania is $110,000, which brings me to my final statement. Do not accept this contract. It is a shuck. Hire a real tech director, don't rent one, and hire a network administrator. We haven't had one in five years. And I want all the taxpayers to witness, all who do vote yes, as those are the people who don't truly care about the district or its taxpayers.
Thank you. That concludes public comment this evening. Item number five, information items. There are none. Item 6, Board Secretary's report. Mrs. Arbisak.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have six items this evening. Number one is executive sessions from January. Number two is approval of minutes from January. Number three is the potential schedule for the '25, '26 school year, for the board meetings. Number four is Resolution 2025-4. Number five is a letter to the U.S. Representative League. And number six are letters to State Senator Cuscatana and State Representative Eagles.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on these items?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Angler?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaddos. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call.
Agher?
Yes.
Lysovich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Angler?
Yes.
Gaddis?
Yes.
Kope?
Yes.
Yuwaz?
Yes.
DeSento?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Arbisak. Item 7, Director of Finance and Operations Report, Mr. Weir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under A, Finance, we have a grant for $96,410 for improving our cybersecurity, and two I-5 grant from the AIU for kindergarten readiness, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do I hear a motion on 7A? So moved. Motion by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Aghern. Comments or discussion? I'd like to again just say I appreciate the efforts of our technology team and of the business office and all of the administration on securing that competitive grant for cybersecurity. I think that's something that will make our district a stronger, safer place. Okay, we'll move to a roll call.
Agher?
Yes.
Lysovich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Angler?
Yes.
Gaddis?
Yes.
Kope?
Yes.
Yuwaz?
Yeah.
DeSento?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Under letter B, purchasing and contracting, we have 1 through 8, as presented. These have all been discussed in committee, and also before the work session last week, we had a presentation on the band uniforms, and so there was some adjustment to the numbers, and the overall total was actually less than what we saw last week. So numbers 1 through 8 under B, purchasing, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do I hear a motion for 7B? So moved. Motion by Mr. Gaddos, second by Mr. Donahue. Any discussion on these items?
Yes.
Yes.
Number 4.
Yes.
For those screens on the backstop, baseball softball. From my recollection, the screens we had happen before seemed perfectly fine, but there is some issues with it. But, you know, we didn't move the backstops, and basically, so those dimensions all maintain the same. And I was just curious on, is there a reason why the other ones are that bad? Did they have tears in them or anything like that? Russ, do you know what, spend money on new ones? That's all the questions.
We did move the backstop on the baseball field.
Oh, just move home plate back?
No, we moved the backstop up. So yes, the one with baseball doesn't quite fit anymore, and from what I believe, there was some dry rot.
Yes, on the baseball had dry rot. The softball was starting to crack now, and there was no wings on it, so there wasn't full coverage on it. So we got the quote last year to put those wings on, but we just never did it.
Yeah, they used to have wings on them to cover the dugouts.
Yes.
They requested to take them down.
Okay.
They were up there at one point, and two years ago, they asked to take them down, or Helenburg asked to take them down. So they didn't use them. So they used to have them, so they're here up for a store.
Okay, I didn't see them, but I'll look for them.
I know they have them.
Can you speak to the question about security guards?
Oh, the security guard is an additional one for the second floor. We are short one, I believe, at the high school at this time, so this will be filling that position.
So this is filling the position and not creating a new one?
I don't believe so. We should have four grown men security guards at the high school, because we have three and one in the entrance.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Solomon, there is no cost for this tree Pittsburgh, correct? You did say that.
Correct.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll move to a vote here. This is 7B. Roll call. Roll call.
Ahern?
No for number three, yes to the others.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes to all but B3.
Gatus?
All but three.
Copay?
Yes to everything but B3.
Yuhas?
Yes to everything but B3.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Can you read back the results there?
Everything was nine, nothing, except number three. There was five nos and four yeses.
Thank you. So item B3 fails. All others pass. Moving on to item eight, Financial Reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under eight, we have A through F, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do I have a motion on items A through F?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blazevich. Any discussion on these items? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Gatus?
Yes.
Copay?
Yes.
Yuhas?
Yes.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Item nine, Invoices Bill Payable Purpose Orders.
Under nine, we have A and B. The invoices under A are the same as they were for our work session, with the exception of number nine, filing fees for legal tax services was added. And everything else, same as what we had in the work session, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Do I hear a motion for items A and B?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blazevich. Any discussion on the items? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Gatus?
Yes.
Copay?
Yes.
Yuhas?
Yes to all but A5 and B.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Item ten, District Operations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under ten, District Operations, we have items A through G, as presented. Noted that F was the item that we amended. We scratched the 1425 and inserted 2844.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion for approval of 10A through G?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Engler, second by Mrs. Ahern. Discussion. Item F, that amendment, again, that's just to reflect the change in it being a club to an athletic event activity.
As prescribed by the CPA.
Thank you.
Mr. Souls, can you explain that a little bit? Just, I guess I'm not G. Can you explain that a little bit?
The creation of the flag football.
Yeah.
We're creating, through Mr. Mayhaw's guidance, we are bringing female flag football as a varsity sport to the high school. This spring will be our first one trial, so we're really looking forward to that. Seems like the Steelers are really big behind this, and they do support a lot of these efforts with the different schools. It's not a WPIL or PIA sanctioned sport. Hopefully, next year it will be, and we'll be ready to compete as a lot of the other schools around us are.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Gatus?
Yes.
Copay?
Yes.
Yuhas?
Yes.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Number eleven, Superintendent's Report, Mr. Souls.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under the Superintendent's Report, we have Letter A, the Homeschool Visitor Report for January, Student Services, C, our student activities, D, our student fundraising, E, our facility use, and finally, F, our conferences as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion for items A through F?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Gatos?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern. Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Gatus?
Yes.
Copay?
Yes.
Yuhas?
Yes.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Moving on, Professional Personnel, Mr. Souls.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under 12, Professional Personnel, we have A, our leaves of absence, B, resignations, C, hires, D, others, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blazevich. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Great. Any comments or discussion on these items? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Gatus?
Yes.
Copay?
Yes.
Yuhas?
Yes.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Thirteen, Non-Certified Personnel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under thirteen, Non-Certified Personnel, we have Items A, Leave of Absence, B, Resignation Terminations, C, Hires and Transfers, D, Others, and E, Substitutes, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion for 13A through B?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Engler? Second. Second by Mr. Donahue. Any comments or discussion on these items? Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Gatus?
Yes.
Copay?
Yes.
Yuhas?
Yes.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Fourteen, Athletic Personnel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Under fourteen, Athletic Personnel, we have A, resignations, we have B, hires, we have C, others, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do I hear a motion?
No, sir.
Motion by Ms. Copay.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Engler. Roll call.
Ahern?
Yes.
Blazevich?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Engler?
Yes.
Gatus?
Yes.
Copay?
Yes.
Yuhas?
Yes.
Descendo?
Yes.
Squires?
Fifteen, Board President's... Fifteen, Board President's Correspondence. I have none at this time. Sixteen, Executive Session Discussion. We held executive session immediately preceding this. We discussed litigation and real estate. Seventeen, Board Reports, Committees. Do any committee members have anything to report on? SeventeenB, Steel Center.
Yes, I have a report. Sorry, it's going to take a little longer today. The Skills USA had a total of 39 students competing in the district eight competitions, and the winners will be announced in March. The Health Occupation Students of America or HOSA are preparing to attend the State Leadership Conference in Lancaster, PA at the end of March with ten competitors from the Health Assistance, Veterinary Assistance, Public Safety Programs. The Steel Center's Leadership CTE Students will take part in the presentation opportunities and presentation opportunities for the remainder of the school year to promote the value in career and technical education and the pathways to success offered by the Steel Center. And the newly renovated Cosmetology Program area has passed its onsite inspection and is now fully operational. And the salon is also approved to offer cosmetology services to the public. To celebrate this, the Steel Center JOC Board members are invited to a special open house to receive it prior to the March 4 meeting. And then, we have the... If I can turn the page? Yes, I can. The Student of the Month, Students of the Month for both December and January because of the timing of everything. In, or December and January. In December, we had Brianna Green for baking and pastry chef, Timothy Sapelli, building trades, Maxton Marshall, cybersecurity and networking technology, Kendall Carrigan, culinary arts, Leah Roberts, veterinary assistant. Student of the Month awards for January included Jaleela Pendleton for cosmetology and Leah Roberts for veterinary assistant. Then, for the first semester, the Top of the Shop Awards for our students, Timothy Sapelli for building trades, Ryan Graham for collision repair and refinishing, Jocelyn Hart for electrical construction, Ryan Bookleitner, I think it's Bookleitner, or it might be Bookleiter, HVAC? Okay, they spelled it wrong then. I apologize to Ryan, wherever he are. Mallory Bennett for sports medicine rehabilitation services, and Carmine Klaasik for welding. Extra Effort Awards for the first semester included Timothy O'Shea for automotive technology two, Christopher Siesla, baking and pastry chef, Ryan Taylor for culinary arts, Maxton Marshall for cybersecurity and networking technology, Michael Olak for electrical construction, and Darren Spade for welding. And finally, Work-Based Learning Co-op Students include Evan Spiezak, Quinn Construction for electrical construction, Ryan Bookleitner, ah, they spelled it right this time, Elk Air Conditioning and Heating for HVACR, Austin Smith with Ken Ganley Toyota Automotive Technology One, Michael Olak with Triple Crown Electrical for electrical construction, and finally, Jocelyn Hart, Leface McGovern, electrical construction. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Sounds like some exciting things happening. So, Mr. Report, item 19.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report tonight.
Okay. Item 19, Old Business. I think, given the failure of approval for Ford Business, we should discuss what our next steps are and what the plan is in order to make sure our technology services are being I think this recommendation kind of came out of the Technology Committee, but...
Yeah, I would ask for dissenting voters, what your ideas on what you want are. Because the recommendation came out of the Technology Committee, and I think we all voted for it, but members not of the committee voted against it. So I'm just curious what the disconnect might be and what you're thinking. What do you want?
I just thought the amount sounded astronomical.
For five years? That's what we've had paid, I mean, based on where they are and where they have been. That's, I think, what are we paying this year? I think it's $195,000 or something. It's just that steady increase, which was in all the documentation that we shared with the group, so.
And I mean, I think part of that is, we're not just getting one person out of this, right? It's not one person's salary who's getting paid $195,000 a year to be our technology person. We're getting a booklet worth of services that are being provided.
I think we just want consistency, one person. I mean, we've gone through how many directors...
Yeah, having a revolving door was not ideal.
It's, none of that is ideal. That's been my feelings on that for a long time. I'd like to see it in-house, personally.
You want to hire a West Midland employee?
I would like to see it in-house, yeah. Somebody that's here every day, working with our tech team.
Is our technology director here every day, Mr. Souls?
What would the estimated cost be for a tech director and a network administrator? Salaries, benefits, all in?
To my knowledge, we don't even have a network admin.
I'm just saying, that's probably, to compare to what they're providing us, that we would probably need two people, minimum, right?
We do get network administration services from Ford.
Yeah, if you had two full-time employees, a director and a network administrator, it would be more than the $210,000 a year, with benefits and everything, all in, with Peasers and all the fun stuff that they get in their compensation packages. So it would be well above that. It would probably be more along the order of $300,000.
Additionally, they have more well-rounded staff, so those odd items that happen once or twice a year, that you can utilize someone with vastly more experience, rather than having to train someone in-house to do the odd jobs that have come up occasionally.
Right. The benefit to having a company like this, you don't need a network administrator until you need a network administrator. It's not like they're sitting there monitoring all day long. You need a variety of skills every day. And having a service like this that has a bench of various, variably skilled, technology-focused people that they can tap into for a specific challenger project that they're working on at that point in time, and then they send them back to Ford, that allows us a lot, affords us a lot of flexibility for our dollar. But if we hire just a director and then just a network administrator, they're not going to do much most of the year. So I think we just need to think and talk about as a group, what is it exactly? Because I think we could also send out an RFP for another Ford-like company and see what other prices are. I would like that, just because it gives us flexibility and a deeper bench of a variety of skills versus just pitching holes into just having a director and just a network administrator, that I don't think we have a full-time job's worth of work for them anyway. So just something I think we just need to think about, maybe not here right now. But we'll want to do it before the end of June, right? We want to have something...
Well, we wouldn't do it sooner than that, because you'll need, their contract ends June 30th, right?
I mean, honestly, it's, their contract ends June 30th. If we post an RFP, we'll want to give time to answer that, and then we'll want time to review it.
And you have to have something in place by June 30th, or you're going to be in trouble over the summer.
And would we include...
Whether you get in-house or out.
Just a question for this group. Would we include Ford in that RFP if we put that route? Just because the chances there may be, if we don't, that the other service providers are going to see these numbers, and they're just going to, I would add money to them.
Why wouldn't they get an opportunity?
I would add money to them.
And what Mr. Blazevich means is, will they have a fair shake? Or is, it was the...
Yeah, I mean, if you reopen it, you reopen a lot of them.
I apologize, I wasn't here last week. None of this was discussed?
None of it.
No.
Don't we already have two tech, full-time tech employees?
We have multiple tech employees.
Five? Five? So that's already in our budget, right?
This is already all in our budget?
Yeah.
All of this is in our budget? Okay, well, we could take it offline and talk a little bit more about it. I was just curious, because it kind of came, it wasn't discussed last week, and it kind[1702.48] and it kind of surprised me. Um, I guess people had thoughts, um, and I was just curious as to what those thoughts were, so, okay.
So I guess we will continue to stew with our thoughts and decide what we're going to do moving forward here. We don't have set direction at this time, unless there's something you need from us tonight.
Well, if, if we're going to go down the R F P, I would like at least the, the board to direct us to go ahead and create one. That way, you know, I think in another thirty days, uh, was if something would come to change, there needs to be that overflow of, overlap of services.
I'll, I'll put one together as the chair of the Technology Committee and share it with the rest of the committee, and then we can bring it back to the board, and I don't know if we need, we don't need to vote on that to send it out, right?
Administration to put?
To advertise for it.
To advertise for it.
I think D needs permission.
Yeah.
Well, at least, if that's the direction we're going, you're okay?
In the R F P, it's up to you. You have some flexibility in terms of how you want to do that. You can either advertise it formally, or you can just put it on the website. And I'm, frankly, I think-
Because we know it's banks.
Right. And I, I think you're okay with just directing, like, if five of you want administration to do that, whether it's in conjunction with Mr. Blazevich or by, on your own, that's fine. I don't even think you need to take a formal vote.
Okay.
So unless there's somebody opposed to it.
And having that R F P wouldn't limit us to following it, adhering to it, so if we did decide to have it in-house?
You could consider it due diligence, right? And then, I, I mean, I think from a parliamentary perspective, in terms of reconsidering the Ford contract, I mean, I suppose if you put it back on the agenda, I mean, I'd take the position you could vote on it again if, if that's what you decide to do in a couple of months, or a month.
Well, one thing, can we resolve this today? There's hiring a, there's creating a job description and hiring a full-time tech director as an employee of the district. And then there's putting together an R F P to solicit bids for I T services similar to what we already have.
Right.
I don't want to put a, put together an R F P if five of us just wants to hire somebody. So can we make that decision today? Do we, are we allowed to make that decision today?
Sure. I mean, at this point, you're not-
I just don't want to do the work.
You're just getting direction from the rest of the board.
No, we're not going to do that anyway. We just want to hire somebody, then let's just do that.
Yeah, and, and again, I think the, the Technology Committee was all kind of in agreement here, so if there is something that is what other people are looking to do, you've got, got to voice that and say, do we have-
You want to, you, you want to voice your opinion?
I, I don't know what else to say, and it's like-
Yeah, okay, well, that's one for-
This is February. I think we do have a little bit of time, I will say that. Like, I think we do, like, have a little bit of time to talk about this. I don't think that this is, like, dire on February twentieth, that we're going to die on the sword.
I'm asking, I'm asking for a decision, so I know what the work is.
I just think that if nobody's speaking up, then we're just, you and I are chatting about this, so maybe we need to give it a day or two, or a week, or whatever the case may be.
The dissenting votes thought about it for a week.
No, I, I didn't. I actually, I thought about it this whole time. This might have been my opinion about it for a day.
So we got, we got one for a full-time hire.
Yeah. I, I don't, obviously, nobody else is giving an opinion here, so maybe we do talk about it next month.
Yuhas, full-time hire, and we got three right now who are okay.
And we have five on staff now, so maybe one of them could step up, or some of them, maybe their skills are network admin. I have no idea what we have, but we maybe need to look on what we have in-house. Okay, that's my opinion on that.
Well, there's four, there's four who, okay, with going with the contract route. I'm not saying Ford route, I'm just saying, contracted services.
What's the administration's recommendation? I mean, what, I mean, I'm, I'm sure their recommendation was what was voted on, but that obviously didn't pan out, so, I mean.
I, I gave my opinion on multiple, uh, so nothing you should follow, so it's really just matter.
That's picked up before, and they don't follow what he says anyhow.
I agree with you. We don't, just let something broaden, and we can talk about it.
Well, I'll talk to him right now. Hey, Joe, do you want to hire a full-time employee, or do we want to go for a bid?
You mean, put it back out for a bid?
Yeah.
Put it out for a bid, period? Either way, I think it's-
Is it appropriate for you to bid it out, or, because I, I could just explain what, what the differences are between the two?
Can, to her point, can he provide us, can we slow this down for a week, and can he provide us with the information on? We already know what, what one number was going to be, what the going rate for what we're going to need to hire would be, and so we could, maybe that eases Mrs. Ahern's concern. Her, her concern was obviously financial reasons, so if, if we see on paper this, route A is this and route B is this, then that, maybe that, that solves people's concerns.
I mean, you mean, and then we put Ford back on for, for, for March, is what you're saying?
Or, yeah. Or we don't, right? It's just, we need, we would get additional information.
Just tell me what you want me to do.
So I, I think, yeah.
Does that make sense?
I, I think what we're doing here is, uh, getting that additional information in terms of what it would look like in terms of cost for an in-house hire to cover the services currently provided by Ford. And then, once we have that information, we'll be more informed to make a choice moving forward about what it is that we want to do.
Okay.
Like, so, so a lot of what we were privy to in our discussions in committee, the, the board wasn't. A big piece of this was the liability issue that, right, Mr. Souls?
Yep, yep.
And can you explain that to the board?
Some of the cybersecurity issues that we have, if there is a breach, is, it falls onto the Ford shoulders and not squarely on ours. So that's, that's a liability piece that we, we're still liable to a point, just not for a full board.
And if I was to recommend hiring somebody full-time, it probably wouldn't be a network administrator, it'd probably be a, a security specialist. And I, I mean, we're, now we're the director and the cybersecurity specialist, and we're well, well above what this, what this number is today, so.
I just don't understand, and I apologize for not being here last week, why these concerns weren't, that's the appropriate place to air your concerns, not, not, after something's happened. Yeah, not put somebody on there and, and embarrass their company, a current employee that is, you know, contractor of the district.
Mr. Weir, you're pretty inept in some of the things. I'm just asking you what you're, I'm just asking you. Sorry. So pretty much, if you're looking for just two pretty skilled I T people with Peers retirement, with healthcare, you're going to be above and beyond what we currently are talking. You might say it might be worth the money to have those skills in-house. I would tell you, whether it's Ford or somebody else, when you, when you contract with them and you have somebody in here on a daily basis, like the director, there's certainly benefit there and tangible on a daily basis, but there's different times, like when we have a surge at the beginning of the year that we had this year, when we got a bunch of new devices, and they had to get imaged and get, you know, uh, ready for distribution to our students. Boy, having that deep bench made a big difference. That's only, you don't need all those people all the time, but it was very beneficial to have them at that period of time. So I would tell you, I think that this model of contracted services, I think, is cost-effective, but there is something to be said that you don't have that director as an employee, and you're vulnerable to a revolving door with directors. That's a valid thing to talk about, but I will tell you strictly from dollars and cents, contracted services is a smart way to go, from my analysis and my opinion.
And in terms of services being met, have there been technology gaffs? I think that there were a few years ago. I won't be the first to say that. I mean, not to, again, put, we're kind of on the chopping block here, but I wouldn't have voted for them three years ago. I did vote for them today, because I think we have had consistent director. We haven't seen issues like we've previously seen in terms of technology needs being met. I don't know if there's anything either of you would like to speak to that.
I'd say, why don't we just look to R F P and keep everyone on their toes? If, if, if Ford comes back and it's good or whatever, I have no problem. It, it, not to always continue every year, just to give somebody or hand something out.
Yeah.
I think it's good sometimes to keep people on their toes, and I don't feel there's a wrong with exploring it, or at least put it back out there and see what we get.
Yeah, I mean, there are some risks there, but I, I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. Even if we still keep Ford, at least they know where we're still holding the counter, still looking at it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not just accepting-
That's five.
That's five.
If you and Tony are okay with that, are you and Tony okay with that?
Yeah, me.
No, I was just asking, Tony, are you okay with-
Yes.
Putting R F P together?
Yes.
That's five, that. Then we'll just go with that, that route. Is that okay?
I think we need to, to do that.
Just as a next step?
Yeah, as the next step.
Okay. I don't think so.
Okay. Thanks. Any other items under old business? Any items under new business? Item twenty-one, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Kope. Second, flies out Mr. Yuhas, needing adjourned.